Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for joining us at our April 10th City Council meeting. And if you'll be kind enough to please stand and say that we'll say the pleasure of leaving.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Mayor Paula?
Here.
And Everett?
Here.
Okay. Any conflict of interest declarations from the City Council?
None.
Okay, seeing none? Agenda review, regular session, any changes and/or deletions requested? Seeing none?
I am going to have to recuse myself from the minutes of four and five.
Okay.
And the way that I understand it, I do not have to leave the dais. I can just sit here and but those will have to be pulled and approved by someone else.
No.
But I'll be happy to leave the room if you'd like.
You have no need to remove to leave the room.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I had a note here. Let me get this.
Okay.
Number four and number six.
Number four and number six.
Yeah.
So number four, number five, and number six.
No, just number four and number six.
Okay, so.
Number five.
All right, so Carol will be pulling number four and number six.
Actually, skip number six. I'll just pull number four. Six and twenty.
Okay, so we'll pull number four. Carol, number six is good. Mary Ann's going to recuse herself of four and five.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct? Okay. Got that. Okay, so with that, now comes something I'm very honored and pleased to conduct as the oath of office to our new city manager. So it's really a pleasure to do that. So why don't you join me on the stage here? And I'll try to speak loud. Hopefully, everybody could hear me without the microphone. Maybe I shouldn't give the microphone since it's being recorded. Thank you. So those at home will be able to hear it as well. So David, if you could please raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I, and state your name?
I, David Kelly.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
I will support and defend?
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
And though he was appointed city manager March 31st, this is officially on the 10th of April. Congratulations, David.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I just want to present you with a little certificate of an outstanding achievement to David Kelly. From the City Council hereby appoints you to the position of city manager effective the 31st, March 2018, with all the rights and privileges of that position and is presented this day, the 10th day of April, 2018.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay, and we are now at public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have a right to speak on any items on the council agenda during this item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium, when advised by myself, and speak directly into the microphone. Each person will have a limit up to three minutes. You'll get a two-and-a-half-minute warning so you can summarize your final comments. You'll be stopped at three minutes. You will have one opportunity to speak during the public comment. There will be no repeat speakers. So you'll come up, you have three minutes, you cannot return after you've had your three minutes. And I would encourage you, if there's somebody who has said basically what you want to say, feel free to come up, you sign in, say "I support" whatever comments were said, and we'll make sure the record reflects that. There's no need to repeat the same comments over. So with that, I've asked that you sign your name here and then come up to the podium when recognized and speak. So who would like to be first? Please state your name into the... Okay, Preston?
No according to the assignment.
Okay, who signed in first? Linda, if you can... Okay, Preston, please come up, state your name for the record. And Linda, would you call those in order so we keep them on track? Thank you. So the clock starts once you identify your name, please.
Preston Addison. I'm here speaking personally tonight to address a letter sent by Councilmember Brigham to the school board. It was my ethical and moral duty as the board's spokesperson to put the proposed locations' proximity to the school and future skate park on the table for your consideration. My duty to come forward is imposed on me by my public service position, not by any personal interest in the matter. Brigham posted her letter online as well as sent it to the school board. Yipolani Bovee sent a letter to the City Council and school board as well that same evening. Both were full of libelous statements about myself and my wife. I have no interest in Quonset Botanicals, California Wellness, nor any other cannabis applicant. The building I hold a lease on or own will not have dispensaries or manufacturing of cannabis. Rumors are many, but my sole connection is to a friend involved in California Wellness. My wife and I serve as a personal reference for him. I would vouch for Dave Parnell's integrity and values at any cost, which is all I've done on their application. I have not written a letter of recommendation, as alleged, nor do I have any financial interest in the venture, as alleged. I have not taken, nor will I take, a position on the cannabis applications of anyone. And if you read the section in the application on my wife's position, it clearly states that Ms. Connor is a longtime and close personal reference for California Wellness consultant David Parnell. She is, however, not in favor of cannabis legislation, legalization. I don't know how much more clearly you can state you will serve as a personal reference, but you don't support the cannabis application. Read the facts, not the spin Mary Ann Brigham has put on the truth. It is unacceptable that Mary Ann has made a truthful, factual presentation, I made, about the school board's position on the location of a dispensary into a personal attack on me and my family. I came forward because it is my duty to put another perspective on the table and represent the best interests of our youth, who have no vote come election day. I know I fulfilled my duty to the children of our community to make sure their interests were represented and put before you during this difficult time. Mary Ann has made the cost of public service personally punitive?
You have 30 seconds, please.
Which is unacceptable in the democratic ethics of which I was raised. Mary Ann, I will remind you of the council policy on every agenda. Quotes, "We may disagree, but we will be respectful to one another." All comments will be directed to the issue at hand and addressed to the City Council. Personal attacks are unacceptable. You have violated every one of these tenants. Mary Ann, I know you and your supporters will probably redouble the personal attacks, but it is personally in your power to return this to a civil discourse, to stop the libel, stop the slander, stop the threats that my family are being subjected to. Focus on addressing the issue, the proposed location, not personally attacking those in governance in this community with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Linda, would you call the next person, please? Please state your name for the record.
Michelle Winterbottom-Cloverdale. After two years and more of public hearings, and the council discussion of the ordinance was finally approved in September 2017, the council public and police chief discussed the issue detailed, and it was determined that 600 feet was appropriate for our town. In 2018, RFPs were presented for three businesses, which were painstakingly reviewed the requirements to ensure that their location for their business facilities would adhere to the strict regulations of the ordinance. After purchase and or lease of facilities and getting their permits, the council would agendize the permits for final discussion and approval. For council to change the requirements in the middle of the RFP process is outright wrong and should be forbidden. If a person buys a piece of property or enters into a lease based on the current zoning, current ordinance regulations, and that property meets all the regulation, receives their permit to conduct the business, the council is required to adhere to the outlined regulations as adopted during the process. The council has no right to change the rules in the middle of any process, and those businesses submitting applications and permits should be grandfathered in. If council wants to change future businesses, then it is up to them, but to change the rules when a business has adhered to all the regulations as adopted is purely political. During the meeting of March 13th, council members held the public hearing. Council discussion ensued, a wish they determined that local business owners would be beneficial to the community. Councilmember Walter felt that he wanted to submit a motion to the two applicants and grant permits to the Red Door and Quonset, and possibly going back to review the ordinance to allow three dispensaries in the future. Staff was directed to formalize the motion and bring it back for approval at the next meeting.
One minute.
A motion is a formal proposal by a member of the deliberating assembly, and the assembly take certain action. A motion to rescind previous motion presented at March 13th was not done. Therefore, the action of the council was totally inappropriate and denied. I'm requesting the council bring this item back to the next city council meeting to adopt the resolution as motioned to approve during the March 13th meeting. Prepare the resolutions with those two licenses, is how the staff was directed to do, and the council action on that item was listed.
Thank you. Could you read the next name, please? Linda?
We have Joan Mizeal.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Joan Mizeal. The following comments are based on my professional experience with the RFP process. As a healthcare consultant and program evaluator, I have submitted dozens of proposals in response to RFPs from the state of California and many California counties. I appreciate the council's desire to have the selection of the cannabis dispensaries be based as much as possible on objective, on an objective process, but without sufficient transparency, it's hard to have faith in the evaluation results. I will comment on just two items that call into question the evaluation process. One is the highest score for California Wellness, suggesting that there was an inadequate review of that proposal. The financial pro forma is woefully lacking on both the revenue and expense side. The revenues are markedly overstated. They mark up the cannabis to be sold to five times the cost of goods sold, when a more accurate markup is two times. The labor expenses are seriously understated, based on the narrative that says there will be five staff at all times at $22.50 an hour with full benefits. A back-of-the-envelope calculation suggests labor costs in the neighborhood of $345,000 rather than the $175,000 in the pro forma. The evaluation criteria with the most weight, 125 points, was for the business plan. With this sort, this kind of financial plan, how could this be the top-rated proposal? The second item is the low rating for Quonset Botanicals. The bidder was given only two reasons for the low rating: lack of a full background check and lack of proof of ownership of the property.
You have one minute.
Both of which were clarified almost immediately. Without access to the scoring sheets or a fuller explanation of the deficiency of the proposal, it is impossible for an impartial observer to know if the evaluation panel judgments were sound. These two examples clearly suggest that the evaluation scoring must be made public so that there can be a fully transparent process. I know this would be time-consuming, but given the controversy over this issue in the community, it seems like the only way to resolve unanswered concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you read the next name, please, Linda?
I can be very brief, because I really just want to reiterate a point, I think, that was made earlier, which is, has to do with the...
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Thomas King.
Thank you.
On the question of their criterion, how close dispensaries can be to schools, I, my observation was that the council did a thoughtful job of evaluating that and set some standards. I, I think it's unfair and ineffective both to try to reconsider those standards in the middle of the process evaluating proposals that were conditioned on those standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, if you could read the next name, please?
Good evening, council. My name is Jeanne Cox. I'm here today on behalf of the board of the Friends of the Cloverdale Library. Several weeks ago, one of our librarians, Kat Hinsmans, passed away suddenly. An invitation went out via email to members of the Friends, but I wanted to personally convey to the council and staff an invitation to a memorial for Kat that is going to be held this Saturday at the forum room at the library from 2:00 to 4:00. There will be light refreshments. A statue in memory of Kat is going to be placed in the outside patio. She was a lover of dragons. So we have obtained a statue of a dragon resting on an open book that is going to be placed in her memory. So I just hope that the council and staff might find time during that two-hours spread of time to stop by the library and have a glass of punch for Kat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kay Wells. My name is Kay Wells. I've lived here 20 years. I serve on two boards here in the city. And I wish to address the issue of the school's objection to the proximity of a cannabis store to the school. I'll bet you dollars to donuts that all the intermediate schoolchildren are well aware of the existence of cannabis in our society. They know where it's going to be sold. They keep up with what's going on in the community. They know there's going to be two stores. I think that the majority of the students head north up the boulevard. They pass a grocery store in Delhi where they can wear beer and wine, and liquor is available. They know they can't go in and buy it. Where cigarettes are available, they know they can't buy cigarettes. And I understand there are vaping materials available in town. If you want to worry about something, worry about vaping materials, and all the information's come out about the addiction that happens because of that. So I think that the fact that the school's community does show up at the meeting two, before the last one, when the two applications were accepted, is very interesting. Why were they not there? I was there. I don't remember hearing anything from the school community. And now they're kind of Johnny-come-lately to appeal when already two contracts have been approved. So I just want to point out that I do not think this is a real threat to the intermediate school community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Temple Smith?
Mayor Paula, councilmembers, Chief Kramer, and city staff. My name's Temple O. Smith. I live in Cloverdale. And I'd like to address the concern some people have about the location of the proposed Quonset Botanicals. The site is in compliance with California state guidelines and the city's ordinance. In fact, this afternoon, a friend of mine and I took a rangefinder over there. We shot from the Quonset hut to the school, went to the school, and reversed it. We came up with 710 feet, not 622, and not 600. I watched the students three times this last week, leaving school. I didn't see any students cross Cloverdale Boulevard on Sisters Fair Drive and go south in front of the Quonset hut. They all go to the south end of Washington, they cut across a field, then they walk east on Hillsburg, where the flashing lights are and the crossing guard. And... Don't do this to me. On that, if they walk as far as Hillview Drive, they'll pass two gas stations, a market, and a market deli. All of these establishments have advertising for beer in their windows. The market has a sign that says liquor, and students are allowed in all of these stores. They will not be allowed in the dispensary. Even if they press their face to the window and look in, they will not be able to see any of the products. Unlike the smoke shop that's on Hillsburg Avenue that had the door open this afternoon, you could see everything in there on the shelves: the pot plates, bongs. Colorado legalized marijuana two years ago. In a study done after the first year, although there was a perceived increase in the ease of access of marijuana by adolescents, use behavior did not change, and the study showed marijuana use by adolescents didn't change based on the proximity of a dispensary. And in ending, I strongly urge you to support the local businesses and grant the permit to Quonset Botanicals.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Whitaker, and I had a big thing rode out here, but I don't need to read it because he already stated that he's good friends with this man, his wife is good friends with him, and I just wonder why the school board didn't show up two weeks ago, you know, the first meeting or the second meeting? Why did they wait till after it was given? Because that's what I took it. On that second meeting, I thought you guys gave it to Quonset Botanicals and the Red Door. That, just what I thought. I could be wrong. I guess I am. But why did they show up in force, bringing kids, having kids talk, when the little girl was definitely nervous, parroting what her parents told her to say? Just like the shooting victims in Florida are parroting what their parents want, it wasn't gun control that got those kids killed. It was the lack of government taking care of mentally ill and troubled patients. Okay? If we would take care of troubled patients, then, hey, that would have never happened. There was warning signs. I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope you can look at it again, because I really think that it just seems kind of bad that the man is friends with this person, and they wait till after it's already almost approved, and then all of a sudden the school board shows up. It just sounds fishy to me, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next? Who?
Linda Bree?
If you want to speak, please be sure to sign that. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. As I've attended, spoken, and listened to all the comments on the various aspects of cannabis dispensaries in Cloverdale, it is clear to me the discussion has not been beneficial to either side of the argument. For those who are against awarding the dispensary license to Quonset Botanicals in its current location, please take the time to research the subject of location. I'd like to quote from a study that was completed in Colorado called "Adolescent Marijuana Use and Perceived Ease of Access: Before and After Recreational Marijuana Implementation in Colorado." As of January the 1st, 2017, eight states have been, have approved laws for recreational marijuana use. While the social impacts of these changes remain under debate, the influence on adolescent marijuana use is a key policy and health issue across the U.S. The objective of the study was to examine the changes in adolescent marijuana use behaviors in the first year after recreational marijuana implementation in Colorado, and to analyze the effect of retail marijuana store proximity on youth's use and perceptions. The conclusion is, as the previous gentleman said, in the first study of adolescent marijuana use and perceptions after state retail implementation of recreational marijuana, there was little change in adolescent marijuana use, but a significant change in the perceived, perception, pardon me, of ease of access. Perception being the key takeaway here. As my time is limited?
One minute.
To three minutes, I can't quote from all the studies that I've read. Would it not benefit the community to find a compromise? Since this is a perceived negative reaction to the location, it would be beneficial to the community for the school board and Quonset Botanicals to work together to find a compromise. Perhaps the proposed site could be made more discreet and obscure from view. Quonset Botanicals and its proposed current location is within the law as the law is stated. Do we not want new businesses in town? Wouldn't it be best to have local, well-known, and respected owners operate such a business? Also, goes without stating, it'd be good to make a decision as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, who's next?
Eric Neal. Right.
Good evening. I'm Eric Neal. I felt like it was unfair at the last city council meeting to have essentially awarded permits to Quonset and Red Door, and at the next meeting, change your mind. Quonset met all the requirements, including the setback set by the state from the school, but then you said that that was not good enough. I understand the school folks' point of view. Several of them are friends of mine, people I've worked with for many years, and people that I respect. But I believe that they are blurring the location of Quonset Botanicals with their disdain for kids smoking pot. I know it's disheartening from experience to have kids at school or in your classroom who are stoned, but that's a drug usage issue that is not going to be affected one way or another by Quonset Botanicals' location. Kids are not likely to say, "There's a cannabis dispensary on Cloverdale Boulevard. That makes it okay for me to start smoking pot." Kids start smoking pot for other reasons. The idea behind legalizing pot and having dispensaries is to control usage. But many people, including probably many here tonight, are afraid that legalization will create a free-for-all. I think the school folks that spoke at the last meeting created a, almost sort of hysteria, a "we've got to protect our kids" point of view, that put the council in a tough spot. You're not going to vote...
You have one minute to summarize.
Thank you. You're not going to vote against protecting kids. But the reality is that there are much more efficient ways to protect kids from dangers of drug use than focusing on the location of Quonset Botanicals. I think you were manipulated by the school folks, their exaggerated and unnecessary fears. This is a complicated issue, but the council needs to respond to in a manner that reflects not overreacting to emotional pleas, but to what's best for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda, who's next on the list, please?
Does anybody else want to address the city council? Please sign this. And if anybody else wants to speak after this gentleman, please sign that so we can get you up here.
Thank you for hearing me out. My name is David Parnell. I'm with the California Wellness application, as I think everybody knows. And so on that point, I would say that California Wellness is still interested in being awarded dispensary license. We submitted revised budget numbers last week per Councilmember Walter's recommendation, and California Wellness is ready to answer... and California Wellness is ready to answer any questions at any time and meet with city staff as is necessary. But I'm not here tonight on behalf of California Wellness. I'm here on behalf of my very good friend Preston Addison.
Yes, thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of my good friend Preston Addison. And the short of it is this, Preston has absolutely no financial interest in California Wellness. I asked Preston to put his name and his wife Wendy Connor on the California Wellness application as references, as character references for me, because I've known them forever. And that has been clear from the get-go, from the moment that our application was submitted. And to the extent that anyone, anyone, has any questions or any doubts that Preston might have a financial interest in this, I am happy to discuss it with anyone. It's a bit like proving a negative, because it just doesn't exist. And I can tell you that the reason that I've been friends with Preston and Wendy for thirty-some years is that they are good, honest, trustworthy people, and they have that kind of bedrock integrity that is invaluable to any community. And to hear now about these troubling allegations that-
You have one minute to summarize.
Thank you. That there has been an abuse of an official position, and that Preston would put financial gain over ethics is very disconcerting. Councilmember Walter also provided a path forward for Quonset in finding a different location. I don't see why that path has not been taken, as opposed to really what I see as a vindictive attack against someone who had nothing to do with anything. So, to the extent that I can make it as clear as possible, Preston Addison, Wendy Connor have absolutely no financial interest in California Wellness. I think they would still serve as character references for me despite the pain that has been inflicted on them, but again, if anybody would like to speak to me after this meeting, I'm happy to talk to them. Thank you.
Okay, your time's up. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the city council on this item? And I'm going to ask, how many more people would like to speak on public comment? Okay, seeing none, please sign the list and state your name for the record. Please.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're up. And please pull the mic down so you can speak into it-
Shorter, because I'm shorter.
And state your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Marlese Dickens. I think that what the city council has done in reversing what their decision was in improving the Red Door and the Quonset Hut, and changing their mind, I think it was unethical, in my opinion, and it was shameful. I commend Carol Russell for standing up and keeping her position as-is, okay? I think that Preston Addison and others, you know, on the school board showed no interest whatsoever when all the debates about the dispensaries and cannabis were being held at the city council over the last two years. He was absent until the council approved Quonset Hut and Red Door and rejected Cal Wellness. And now we know that he had a friend that, you know, had a connection with Cal Wellness. He claims that his concerns were for the children, when in truth, it appears that he, you know, basically favors Cal Wellness for whatever reason. Cal Wellness and their location, children will walk back where deliveries are made and pickups are made on that side street lake. That's primarily a residential area, and children walk by there all the time. And they also go in the back parking lot. You know, I think that Mr. Addison does not give credit for parents that do protect their children from liquor cabinets at home, medicine cabinets, and from guns. I believe those parents will be able to deal with, you know, the legalization of pots and the dispensers in town. I think that it's pertinent that-
One minute to summarize, please.
Okay. I think that it's important and pertinent that we have people from our community running the dispensaries. This is going to be, I trust these people, I know these people, and they know the people in this community. And to grant Cal Wellness, you know, a permit, I think is just totally out of line. And, you know, their interest is basically, they have to have an address in order to function in their business, and so they have attached themselves to this town for that reason. They don't care about our people and our community. They don't know them like the other partners in the other dispensaries. And I would appreciate you considering that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to address the city council under public comment? If there's anybody else after this gentleman that's coming down, would you please come down now and sign this book?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one clarification.
Please do.
The gentleman from Cal Wellness mentioned that he, they had submitted revised budget numbers, and I just wanted to make clear that I believe that was just done in response to what Councilmember Walters said at a meeting. There was no RFP that's been reissued-
No.
-or the process hasn't been changed at all, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Staff didn't direct anyone to do anything.
I didn't hear that, does that mean that's public information, revision?
Okay, just hold your questions, please. Would you repeat that one more time?
I just wanted to clarify, the gentleman from Cal Wellness mentioned that they submitted new budget numbers as part of their application, but I just wanted to make it clear that they just did that on their own. There was no direction from city staff to any applicants to present more information to us.
And I just want to clarify, if anybody in the public would like a copy of that, they would be available at City Hall, so, okay? Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Bruce Johnson, and I just want to acknowledge that one of our local leaders has followed all the rules and trying to start a business in town here, as she's done before. I might have this one question, and that is, you know, have, has access for elderly and disabled people been considered in these RFPs? And that's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to address the city council on an item not on the agenda? Please come down, sign the thing, the booklet there. Is anybody else after this young lady that wants to speak?
Hi, Shirley Davis. Good evening. I just kind of, I've got a big question mark here on the top of my head. I thought Gus Walter was the one who asked California Wellness to present some different budget figures. Are the minutes wrong or something? I mean, I'm not sure on that.
He did.
He did. But you just said that-
No, I just want to make it clear that there was not any formal RFP resubmital process happening at this time.
I see. Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry, confusion.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, before I close, I'm going to give one more. Anybody else want to speak to the city council on an item not on the agenda? This is the time. Okay, seeing no one rise, I'm going to close the public hearing, public comments section, and we're going to move on to the agenda. We're going to move on to proclamations. We have three of them this evening. The way the process is going to work, I'm going to start off by reading the first one and go down and present it, and then I'm going to ask our city manager to read the second and third one, and I'll make the presentations. So, I'll start off with the first one would be a city council proclamation recognizing April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Cloverdale. And whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas one in seventeen men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas young people are at greatest risk of sexual violence, and youth age twelve to seventeen are 2.5 times more likely to be raped or sexually assaulted. And whereas disabled people, people of color, LGBTQ people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can successfully, be successful in preventing sexual violence through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the city of Cloverdale strongly supports the efforts of Verity and encourages every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling and other supportive service, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Joseph J. Pollitt, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Cloverdale, and the city council so reaffirms its commitment to address the issues of rape, sexual violence by remembering victims, supporting survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetrate sexual violence in our community. So, is anybody here to accept that?
If you can, if you could state your name for the record?
Amanda Silva, Director of Operations at Verity.
Thank you so much for your service and all that you do.
And I would love to make a comment to thank you all. Please.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Well, mayor, vice mayor, brand-new city manager officially, and council members, I want to thank each and every one of you and everyone that's here tonight, because we keep fighting this fight. We've been here over forty years as the Rape Crisis Center, and here we are in the Me Too Movement. It feels like it's new again, but this is an issue we've been familiar with for all of those years and beyond that. That's why the Rape Crisis Movement began. And what's most crucial is ongoing awareness, and when city councils speak up, you know, it rises up the voices of survivors, it rises up everyone's voice that's affected, because it's also not just the survivors, it's everyone in the community that's impacted. There's obviously the psychological costs, but there's also financial costs to our communities. And so I think it behooves all of us to be part of the solution and continuing to talk about this, and it's not easy to talk about, but even though it seems like not a big thing we're doing tonight by proclaiming it, it's marking it every year so that we don't let ourselves forget. We don't just let it go by the wayside because it's not easy to talk about. So, I thank each and every one of you, and we appreciate so much your commitment, and including everyone in the audience for witnessing that. Thank you.
On behalf of the mayor, I'm going to read item number two. It's a city council proclamation recognizing April 10th as Equal Pay Day. Whereas more than fifty years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in the United States of America typically earn eighty percent of what men earn. And whereas according to one estimate, college-educated women working full-time earn more than a half a million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime. And whereas nearly four in ten mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And whereas lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement, and less income in Social Security or pension benefit formula. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas Tuesday, April 10th, symbolizes the time in 2018 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Therefore, be it proclaimed that Mayor Joseph J. Pollitt has hereby proclaimed April 10th, 2018, as Equal Pay Day in the city of Cloverdale, and this council so reaffirms its commitment to recognize the full value of women's skills and contributions to the labor force, and further encourage businesses to conduct internal pay evaluations to assure women are being paid fairly.
I'm Diane Bartelson, a Cloverdale resident and AAUW member. Yes, we had our very successful unequal cookie sale today. It was, we had quite a sign that said, "Honk if you like equal pay." It was a continuous stream of honks, and then there were the surprised looks when some people got only an eighty percent, a bite out of the cookie that's represented by the eighty percent. And I have some leftover cookies from Custos. They were donated, and I would like to appreciate, thank everybody here for supporting this important social equity issue. So, enjoy, and when you're eating these tasty treats, you know, do contemplate how we can help our local businesses review their pay policies. Thank you.
Linda, if I can welcome you to the dance? And Carolyn?
Item three on the agenda is another proclamation. It's proclamation 2018, a proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale, proclaiming the week of April 8 through 14th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, honoring Cloverdale's public safety telecommunications dispatchers. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the driving force behind our nation's emergency rescue services, they are the men and women who dispatch our police forces, ambulances, and/or firefighters. Although they are not as visible as the men and women who arrive at the scene of emergencies, they are just as important and deserve our respect and appreciation. And whereas we depend upon public safety telecommunications to notify emergency personnel promptly, clearly, and calmly, we depend upon them to keep our husbands, our wives, and our children calm and assured in an emergency. We depend upon them for guidance and support in the most frantic and panicked moments. And whereas dedicated men and women engage in the operation or emergency response systems for the city of Cloverdale Police Department and the Cloverdale Healthcare District, and whereas these individuals are responsible for responding to telephone calls of the general public for police, fire, and emergency medical assistance, and for dispatching assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens. And whereas such calls include not only police, fire, and emergency medical service calls, but those related to parking, animals, public works, and maintenance activities, and all the other operations which modern government agencies must, must conduct. And whereas Cloverdale's public safety telecommunications daily serve the public in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services, and whereas some of us have been lucky enough not to have had to dial-
not to have had to dial 911 in the middle of a fire, a crime, a robbery, or an emergency, or a medical emergency. However, for the millions of Americans who have faced such an emergency, public safety telecommunications have been there, ready, and willing to help. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the city council, and the citizens of Cloverdale and its surrounding area, take due time to recognize these professionals for this invaluable service and contribution to our daily lives. And therefore, be it proclaimed that Mayor Joseph J. Polla does hereby proclaim the week of April 8 through April 14, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the city of Cloverdale.
Here you go.
Thank you. And I just want to, if I could, before I make this presentation, I just got to say, having a career over forty years in law enforcement, I can't think of a more hectic job than being in a dispatch center. I have all the admiration for you. Talk about multitasking. I mean, you just don't know when you've got three squad cars out there going in different directions and phones ringing and trying to run teletypes and do different things all at the same time. And I commend you. You guys are fantastic. It is one of the most difficult jobs, I think. The only one that I have to say I wouldn't like to do would be working in a jail environment versus working in the dispatch center. Love to be out in the street, working in the field. That's always fun. But I commend you and thank you for all your service. It's a privilege to be able to present you the certificate. So I'll put that back. You guys want to say? You'd like to say something, you're welcome to.
Don't call us.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Thank you, city manager, for reading those for me. Okay, now we're at the consent calendar. All items under consent will be considered together by one action of the council. Keep in mind, we're going to remove item number four. So, and item number five, Councilmember Brigham's going to recuse herself on four and five.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if there's none other, to be pulled.
Okay. Can we get a second on that? Then I'm going to ask for a discussion, because I want to make sure the public has an opportunity to pull something if they choose to.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Walter, second by Councilmember Brigham, I mean, Bagby. I'm sorry about that. I get. So would anybody in the audience like to have any item pulled before we move forward? So, Councilmember Walter, your motion would be to approve item number four. Four, six, and seven?
No, it's five, six, and seven.
Okay, six and seven. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
I thought it was five, six, and seven.
I thought it was five, six, seven. I'm pulled four.
Well, you're going to recuse yourself from five, so we're going to take that as a separate vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Brigham.
For six and seven. No, she's going to recuse herself on item five. We're doing six and seven.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Mayor Polla.
Aye.
Everett.
Aye.
So item number five is, Councilmember Brigham's going to recuse herself. Can we get a motion to approve that?
I'll move to approve item number five on the consent calendar.
Second.
So, Councilmember Walter, motion, second by Councilmember Bagby. Any discussion on the motion? See, and get a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Mayor Polla.
Aye.
Would Councilmember Brigham recuse herself?
Yes. So item number four, we're going to Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please turn to page nine of that item. And if you go down, public hearings, number 11. We're going to go down one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. The quotes for me and the summary, I realize there is a summary, because it's sometimes difficult to write it all down verbatim. But I would like to have that revised so that it reflects more of my exact statements rather than the general drift. I specifically said, I believe, that certain numbers did not add up. And I pointed out the page and the numbers. And I want that, so if people want to refer to it, they can go back and refer to it. Thank you. Maybe you can check the video for that.
So why don't we hold off on approving this? We'll bring it back to the next meeting after it's revised for a review. Okay?
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll move on, and number four, we'll bring back.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we finished the, okay, so we'll move on. We have no communications. We have no public hearings. We have new business discussion, discussion and possible action on directing the mayor regarding appointment actions for the city selection committee of mayors and council association board of directors regarding various pending assignments.
Mayor Polla, if I can, just real quickly, I just wanted to point out that our deputy city clerk, Linda Moore, did provide a copy of communications to you on your dais by Eric Neal. And there was subsequent communication that was received today. Copies of both those correspondence was provided to you. They specifically requested that if you provided to the council, so we'll include it in the meeting packet. No actions necessary. Just wanted to point out that you had this communication.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So we're on item eight. You want to take that item, sir? City manager?
Yes. So on Thursday this week is scheduled a mayor and councilmembers' association meeting. As part of that meeting, there's a city selection subcommittee meeting that will be held in conjunction with the mayor and councilmembers' association meeting. As part of that meeting, the subcommittee is seeking input on appointments to two agencies, including LAFCO as well as the Oversight Board for the county. And included in your packet are letters of interest by two parties. And what we're requesting in terms of direction today is to provide your recommendation to Mayor Polla for his vote at the city selection committee that will be held this Thursday at the mayor and councilmembers' association meeting.
Thank you.
Those letters are included in your packet, and it's really up to the council to provide direction to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Who would like to start?
I'll start. Are we doing an approval for a local agency formation for LAFCO as well?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I want to make sure we're starting with that one. Yeah, I would strongly support Pam Stafford. She has been, she's very knowledgeable, very strong, very determined, and very dedicated. And my experience with her has always been very, very positive. I think she's just exactly what we need on a board as powerful as LAFCO.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd have to concur with Vice Mayor Russell. She is not only, sorry, she is not only the only candidate, she's the one I would pick. Well said.
All right, yeah, and I have to ditto that, because when I had to appear at the LAFCO meeting on several things, and she was up there, she was always very receptive and very supportive, so. Since she's the only candidate, I think we have concurrence to move forward. So, okay, we'll move on to countywide oversight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we start on that, I'm wondering if we could maybe just get some clarification, if we do know. This is a new, apparently a new position. And it's, is this revamping the existing?
No, my understanding is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's all the oversight, citywide and the county, are being eliminated under the law. And there's going to be one that oversees all of them. So this is in compliance with the law. Yeah, so this is the new one, so.
Mayor Polla is correct. Under the dissolution law, all the local oversight boards are going to be brought into one countywide oversight board to see the rocks going forward. And this would be an opportunity for the city to voice their input on one of the appointees. The other appointees will be appointed by other authorities, such as the school district, the junior college district, as well as other special districts. So this is our city representative that would sit on the countywide oversight board.
Okay, so with that being said, I know on the Cloverdale Oversight Board, Vice Mayor Russell and myself sit on that. And, Suzy, I'm just wondering out loud here, how will the county get our information? Who oversees that information being submitted to them for its accuracy? Because we're still going to have to submit a roster report, I would think.
It's going to, we submitted what was, our oversight board submitted what was called the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule. At this point, since it is the last and final, the county really would minister those debt payments. If there is any kind of dispute or issue, we will have to take that up directly with the countywide oversight board at that point. So that's why there's an interest in appointing a member that's going to represent our interests as cities on this particular countywide board.
So hopefully, if there's any changes to Cloverdale, they'll let us know prior to voting, as opposed to, here, we voted on something, live with this.
It'll be important that we track the agendas when those are available and make sure that our interests are represented and rolled up in that process. It's a completely new process that's going to be rolled out through the entire state, so we don't have a good operating pattern to see how this, how it's really going to function.
Thank you. And just to piggyback on that, I think it's really important, since it is a new process, that we do have somebody assigned to attend those meetings and to report back so we know just how much we need to get engaged in this and how it's working, irregardless of who we recommend to represent us. But we have to be in the loop on what's going on. So we have two people that submitted, David Cook, who's a councilmember of the city of Sonoma, and Chris Rogers, who's the vice mayor of the city of Santa Rosa. Both expressed interest. Both are extremely qualified, no doubt. So what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would just, I would like to recommend Councilmember or Vice Mayor Rogers from Santa Rosa. I think we all know him as being a longtime staffer of Mike McGuire's. And I, he has unraveled for me some of the, some very complex financial questions that I've had regarding redevelopment dissolution, regarding lots of taxpayer issues. He's kind of my go-to guy, actually, when I have a policy question. And I just think that he's uniquely qualified with his background and his position to represent us on that committee. So I would like to support his candidacy.
Thank you.
I could second that, Mr. Mayor.
I concur to that. He was my choice because, among other things, I like the fact that he reminds us of his background and also of his relationships. He knows people, and I think he's going to be more adept at perhaps a delicate balancing job that may have to be, have to happen. And that's nothing against David Cook. I think he's fine. But I'd like someone with a broader vision of this. Thank you.
I think Chris would be a good choice.
And I support that as well, so. Okay, as far as the countywide oversight alternate, there's nobody named. I'd like to just get authorization if somebody, if they bring up a name at the meeting. I'm not sure who's going to make a nomination maybe at the meeting, but...
I guess my first choice would be to nominate David, because he does have some experience at the city level, but I just have to give the nod to Chris, because he has a broader statewide experience.
He certainly is the person who has interest. He wants somebody to step in and, you know, and ask for it.
Well, that would be assuming the other eight cities all want to go with Chris. But if it goes the other direction, maybe.
Then we ask Chris.
Well, okay. So what I would just like to get is authorization to kind of feel it out and make a decision at the same, okay? Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we move off of this subject, though, you had mentioned representative at the meetings of the countywide board. Were you thinking of an elected official, or were you thinking of a staff member?
Well, I was thinking of a staff member, at least initially, because, you know, that's kind of what I had in mind. But certainly, it's open for discussion. I think it's really, you want to get at least some feedback as the agenda, what the meeting's about, how it's going, what the purpose, and whether there's a value to have an elected there or not. But the main thing is just so we make sure that our interests are represented appropriately. That's what I'm looking for, if that's agreeable.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, good.
Staff will be certain to let the council know when we receive notice, when those meetings are scheduled to, forward that to the council. Should there be interest?
Sure. And we may find that it's not necessary to be at every meeting. It may be just certain meetings when there's certain things on the agenda of interest. But we just need to kind of understand how this is all going to work. So, okay, good. So unless there's any other comments or questions, we will move on to the next item, and that's consideration and adoption of Resolution 022-2018 awarding the contract for the purchase of one police vehicle to Winter Chevrolet in Elk Grove Auto Group. And Chief Kermit?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor Polla, it doesn't seem to help my purse. May I please, the council? To have staff work before your staff report. I'm researching for the purchase of a new 2018 Dodge Charger SXT piece model as a direct place vehicle for the 2002 Crown Victoria. Damaged, traffic collision. Respond to a progress call for service. Currently, the county police department has fourteen vehicles in service, including one patrol vehicle dedicated as a canine service vehicle. Of those one patrol vehicle, the 2002 Ford Crown Victoria was involved in a traffic collision resulting in the vehicle being damaged beyond repair. A critical day of replacement. Even if one patrol vehicle, the 2009 Chevrolet Tahoe, is assigned as the vehicle with the chief of police, it is not suitable for use as a vehicle for destruction purposes. The Dodge Charger will be assigned as the vehicle for the police chief with the loss of the 2002 Ford Crown Victoria. We are in need of an attic, had to deal with patrol vehicle to our fleet. Transitioning the police Chevrolet Tahoe into the patrol fleet and purchasing one of the two Dodge Chargers will supplement and upgrade our fleet of our patrol vehicles and allow for more active visibility, increase officer safety, provide police registration with professional transportation, and alleviate budgetary impacts due to the correctness. It will be a necessary upgrade of the Dodge Charger with a police interceptor package, thus saving additional funds. This will be the police department's first Dodge Charger. Several agencies in Stowe County, the Correlator Department, and the Federal Department. Transitioning a percentage of their respective fleet, vehicle fleet, Dodge Charger. The department sought to purchase from three qualified vendors. The cabinet suddenly uses the Allen of the county patrol car bed through the Ford store in San Pedro and provided us with a bid of thirty thousand dollars. My comparison, the Colorado Chevrolet of Hillsburg, provided us with a quote of just $130,000 at 29.39. After Winter Chevrolet, Elk Grove Auto Group, here's the state of California car bed. It has a lowest quote of $23,106 plus tax, license, and taxes. I have some purchases set upon black and white 2018 Dodge Charger base model police vehicle, arranged from $35,000 to $15,000 depending on equipment. For the necessary police ready equipment, Stone County quoted our agency $4600 labor costs alone. My comparison to the wireless service quoted our agency $43,000. $62 as a comp testament for essential equipment, parts installation, and a cost labor. The city of Rockville will receive insurance reimbursement check from Anover Insurance Group in the amount of $27,590, replacing the damage to 2002 Ford Crown Victoria. REBA has agreed to split the $10,000 documents here in the city of 22590 to put towards the purchase of the Dodge Charger. According to both REBA and Anover Insurance Group, the Dodge Charger is acceptable and comparable with replacement vehicle. The balance will be paid through the asset forfeiture fund, thus not impacting the city's general fund. Please to follow the presented information. Staff respect the request. Council approve the attachment resolution for the purchase of a 2018 Dodge Charger as a T base model in an amount not to exceed $40,000. I am happy to answer any questions, according to heard of the city manager Kelly or finance manager Steve Holmes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Jeez, this is, as the report says, our first Dodge Charger. And I'm just wondering... Well, a couple of things. I thought it was going to be funny and say, you know, are we going to make it like a bright orange and have it a non-mark car?
No.
But we're going to do it black and white. You know, I'm just wondering, we were on the track of getting away from the smaller cars and moving towards the SUVs, so it'd be easier for our folks to get in and out of them. Is this just a departure, or why are we changing course?
Currently, I drive an SUV, and it's not certain for an administrative car that's a lot of waste of space, so the Dodge Charger will be as light as a bean. It might be a car with a patrol.
Gotcha.
So we'll still continue on the Ford explorers for patrol before professional look, save our money on the budget, and see more practical transition achieved from an SUV to a Dodge Charger.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Any other questions for council?
No.
Okay. I'd like to open this up to members of the public. Anybody like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public input and bring it back to council. We have a resolution.
I'll read the resolution by title only. Mr. Mayor, City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 022, 2018. A resolution of the city council of the City of Cloverdale, awarding a contract for purchase of a police vehicle to Winter Chevrolet slash Elk Grove Auto Group, and authorizing the city manager or his designate to purchase one 2018 Dodge Charger SXT base model police vehicle and associated necessary equipment in an amount not to exceed $40,000, using funds from insurance proceeds and asset forfeiture funds.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
Ever.
Aye.
Okay. Passes. New Charger in route. Okay, so we'll move on. Council reports. We'll start with the subcommittee here. We'll start with the airport. Chair will be Councilmember Bagby.
We meet on June 5th, and just a reminder, the open house is on... or May 12th, so mark your calendars and watch for the flyer.
Okay. Thank you. Finance, Administration, and Police, the Councilmember Brigham.
Next meeting is April the 26th at 2:00 P.M.
Great. Thank you. Planning Community Development, the Councilmember Bagby.
Our next meeting is April 26th at 4:00 P.M.
Public Works, the Vice Mayor Russell.
Next meeting, May 22nd at 10:30 a.m. in City Hall.
Good. And Joint City Fire District, that would be mine, and the next meeting is June 11th at 5:30 p.m. at the Fire District Headquarters. And the City School District, that would also be mine. Our next meeting is May 21st at 5:00 o'clock, and I just want to remind our student liaisons to please be at that meeting. That's the City School Subcommittee, May 21st. We're going to recognize the scholarship sponsors, and we'll... I'll ask Linda if you would be kind enough to send a reminder as it gets closer to the both of them. Okay. Council reports. We'll start with our student liaison.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you again for having me here on this evening of April 15th.
Could you speak into the microphone so people can hear you? Plus, it's on video, so we want to make sure it picks up your voice.
Hello YouTube. All right. Okay. So we have several events going on this week and the coming weeks at Cloverdale High School. As far as sports, we have baseball, played another game today. I think they played Middletown, if I saw the jerseys correctly. Tennis, we... I think we had a win today, which would bring our season up to, I believe, three wins and one loss. Prom, we're currently selling tickets. They're on sale now, as I just said. They increased $10 after spring break because the closer we get to prom, the more kind of some emergency funding that we might need for unexpected costs. I believe there's also a project called Project Princess. It's supposed to award... not award, but make sure that every girl who's going to the prom gets to feel like a princess in the dress that she would like, regardless of the cost of that dress. We have several testing opportunities, not opportunities, obligations really, coming up for students. There's AP testing coming up in early May, and this is sophomores, juniors, and seniors do AP testing in order to get credit for college courses and also to look more impressive on their college applications. And there's also the state testing, which started today. It's to test... It's administered in order to test the knowledge of the students and by extent, the proficiency of the teachers at CHS. And I'm more than confident that we will show very superior scores on that test, I believe we have in years past. Seniors are taking kind of a groundbreaking new science test to just pilot that program. And juniors will be tested in math and English. Also, the scores that you receive on these tests can relate to... can relate directly to credits at accredited universities. I believe mostly California State Universities look at these scores, and they can directly translate to math or English credits. The senior class is having some issues with our senior trip day away. We're not really raising enough money, so we're thinking about dropping the trip to Santa Cruz Boardwalk. And but we are definitely still planning to do midnight cruise around San Francisco Bay, so that'll be really awesome. Also, Mr. Dobbins is leading a class project that I haven't been speaking a lot about, but it's very interesting. It's called the Time Capsule Project. And as the name suggests, it's about high schoolers, and they take several items that they wish... There's a list of recommended items that they put in, and they take those lists and the items on them, and they put their own kind of spin on them, and they put them in a box. And basically, we set a time for ourselves, either somewhere between five and 50 years into the future. And when we reach the appointed date, we look back and we kind of see what kind of things we were doing these days. So this has been... It's been a really awesome opportunity, and I'm sure that the rest of the senior class will greatly appreciate this in the future, even if they might not now. The Interact Club is going... I believe is still going to be painting the Cloverdale Historical Society white picket fence they have out front, and they'll be serving tea at a Rotary-sponsored event in the near future. Most applicants to the colleges, really nationwide at this point, have received their confirmation or rejection letters. Dobbins is, again, recording the admissions of all seniors to see what schools they got into, so that I think so that future classes can look and see how they stack up against the students that are... that were in this year's class and see what their possibility or probability is of getting into the schools of their choice. There's many decisions are due on May 1st, so there's a lot of places that are expecting... I think the entire UC system and most of the CSU system is respecting their response by then. So that's when most of the senior class will know where they're going for the next couple of years of their life. Band, we... The combined band was a very, very huge success. We had a lot of fun there at the Windsor Concert Hall, I believe, Windsor High School Concert Hall. And the family and friends really liked the performance. I got several compliments. We also eliminated a couple pieces before we start practicing for the spring concert, and we are learning several more pieces, so be sure to attend that. I'm going to try to get a date to you guys on that sometime soon, sometime in May. Drama, I know I've told you guys about this a couple times, but it's the place on April 27th, and it's about a teacher who is trying to get his kids to relate to what the Germans were going through in the mid 20th century and just kind of finding out what made the Germans tick and why they chose Hitler as their leader and on accident, trying to just show them what it would be like to be in Germany. He kind of recreated the Third Reich in his own classroom. Yeah. The Wall was largely a success. There were many structures all around town. I'm sure many of you saw them. There's two in the plaza. There's two in what will be Times Square. Our particular project, my class's project, had a little vandalism going on, so that was kind of unfortunate. But we were able to... I think we took it down today, so... And the other groups should be taking theirs down soon, so we'll kind of make sure to clean up after ourselves. And there were many pieces around town. They were in the plaza, Times Square, as I said, and also there was one outside of Papo's, too. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, in two weeks, there will be a movement at our school for gun control, and it's a kind of an event where I believe the students are being called to leave class and not return until the national legislature passes some kind of gun control or gun reform of some kind. And that will be on April 24th, in two weeks from today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Walter?
Just very good report.
I'm just kind of interested in the time capsule, and you said there was a few recommended items to be placed in there. Can you whet our appetite a little bit with that?
Yeah, absolutely. There are... Well, I believe there's a list of about 50 items, and each senior has to complete 35 of them. They range from... Well, there's lots of things, really. I think there's a bucket list of 10 items that you'd really like to do, and you have to give a short explanation. There's a list... This is my favorite to do. There's a list of like 50, like really quick, quippy phrases that's like, what makes you happy? And so I had a lot of fun completing that particular assignment. There's one mandatory that's... One mandatory assignment that is write an animal that you think you are like and an animal that you wish you were like, and give very detailed explanations for those. There's also a more in-depth assignment that's about... I think it's somewhere between three and five people that have affected your life, and that's supposed to be a multiple page assignment. And it will be just kind of so that you can reflect on who's had a large impact on making you the person you are today, being relative in the future. Yeah. So it's a lot of fun, and Sammy has much of the same information. If you have any questions for her as well, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Good. Thank you for that thorough report. Very, very good. Thank you. Okay, so council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Bagby.
I have a brief report because I missed my afternoon deadline today. On March 28th, I attended the Upper Russian River Water Managers Meeting here in Cloverdale at Vets Memorial with our guest Congressman Jared Huffman. We were talking about... It's a group that gets together regularly to just kind of stay on the same page regarding Upper Russian River issues, and he reiterated his support for making sure that the Potter Valley Project remains viable. There is some possible noise from PG&E that they might be interested in dumping that project, and he reiterated his support for continuing water delivery via the Potter Valley Project. On the... On March 29th, I attended the Wall Project Unveil at the Plaza, which was a great event. And then on April 4th, I attended my... the Sonoma Clean Power Board meeting. We fine-tuned the key legislative platform issues for... that are currently rolling around Sacramento. We adopted revised financial policy, reviewed the draft fiscal year 1819 budget and rates, and it looks like we will be remaining at the 2% below the PG&E rates for the 1819 year, so that was some good news. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Walter?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quick, I too missed the deadline.
You can still submit it, please.
Thank you. That's very kind of you. I will. But what I have here is a couple of things I did want to give everybody notice about quickly. First, you probably have heard or will shortly, because the press release went out this morning, I think it was, or yesterday afternoon, I apologize. Smart secured the DOT and FTA funding for Larksburg, which was $22.5 million. We've been working on that for a long time. We made trips to various places to talk to various people, and the folks went to... I know Farhad Mansouri, and our general manager, went. I believe the latest trip to secure this was Jake McKenzie and David Rabbit, Supervisor Rabbit, and Councilmember McKenzie. And they did a very good job. Certainly, I'm very pleased about this, and typical of Smart. When Farhad sent out the note to let us all know before the press release, he made sure that the last line said something like, "Now we can go onward to the north," which I always liked. So, yeah, absolutely. This is... Actually, it's very key. I consider this very, very important to bringing our line all the way north, because, as I say, and not always as politely as I'm about to, I'm going to use the word derriere rather than what I normally say. Begins with A, is three letters, and N's and S. We need deriere's in seats. We need more and more and more people. We have very good ridership. When we show that we could do this from Larksburg all the way up to, you know, Santa Rosa and Hilton and everything else, I don't think we're going to have major problems. Anyway, that's number one. Number two, at the SCTA and Regional Climate Protection Board meeting yesterday, there was a presentation on the 2018 Zero Waste Resolution request, which is going to... which is currently being made to Sonoma County jurisdictions. And I won't go into the elaborate explanation of zero waste. Most of us know what that involves. And there is a desire on the part of the team handling this to get time to talk to the cities about zero waste and about possibly getting a resolution going. I've got all kinds of information on it, which I'm going to share with our city manager, and perhaps we can take a look and see it once the folks from RCPA and the... really from the Zero Waste Task Force contact us, we can begin to circulate it and get everybody interested in it. There are a lot of people we know who are involved in zero waste, including, of course, recology, so it's not alien to us. There's a whole list of folks right now. There is a symposium, by the way. Sonoma County Zero Waste Symposium will be Thursday, May 10th, from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. in the Somo, S-O-M-O, Somo Village Event Center, which is on 1100 Valley House Drive in Ronoc Park, and I'm going to send that out, too, in case some of you are interested. We also had a very nice meeting, and I wanted to thank our city manager. He's certainly a very busy person, but he took time out to come to the Health Action Chapter meeting this morning and did a wonderful job. Our Health Action Chapter formation is moving along, I'm glad to say. And one of the things they presented is an interesting pink party with painted sellers. It's a wonderful event on May 24th, which is a Thursday, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. At... It's going to help the Cloverdale Senior Center, and it'll be at, of course, 219 North Cloverdale Boulevard in the back patio of Volt. And it's going to be very interesting, because I think not only are you going to have some very nice company and some very nice bubbly champagne, little pink champagne, a few other things, but it says here, "You learn to paint the picture above." I've never been able to paint, so I may have to take a trip there. Anyway, it's $35 a piece. I brought enough for everybody, so we can pass this out to the city council and to our city manager, and I promise I will get the full report at my... of my activities to you ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brigham? Nothing? Okay, I just, my report's in the packet, if you have any questions on anything in there, please let me know. It is listed under Council Direction on Future Items, it actually belongs up under City Council Reports, so that's just, that's okay, no, I just wanted to point that out so that the council knows that's not things for the future, it's things that we completed already. One other announcement I want to make is on June 6th, I've been in the process of coordinating a town hall meeting, and it's going to be, you know, a lot of presenters, and the theme of the meeting is going to be where we are today and where we see ourselves in the next two to three years going forward. It's June 6th, going to be from 6:00 P.M. to 8:30 P.M. It's going to be at the Citrus Fair in the auditorium, we got that reserved. The invited guests and presenters are going to be our city staff, of course, city manager, and our senior staff, and he'll break that down, they're going to have, it's going to be 6:00 P.M. till 8:30. So it's going to be, they'll be given an update on city, where we're at, where we're going, both from the law enforcement as well as our administration. These are all confirmed, superintendent, excuse me, School Superintendent Jeremy Decker's going to be there, talking about schools, the needs of the schools, where they're going. Fourth District Supervisor James Gore's going to be there to talk about things going in and around Cloverdale and how they're going to impact us. The Chamber, Nina Hancher's going to be there, talking about businesses and things that, what they're doing at that level. Alexander Valley Healthcare, Debbie Howe's going to be there to talk a little bit about what they're doing with the new wellness facility and some of their, their needs. Citrus Fair, the new CEO Katie Young's going to be talking about Citrus Fair, some of their goals with the facility and how they move forward, and the History Center Board President will be there, Robert Reddner, talking about some of the plans for the facility. You know, it's a very limited time, we're going to have some presenters with a maximum of 10 minutes, some up to 20 minutes based on who the presenter is, and it's going to be leaving about 15 to 20 minutes for question and answers at the end. So we'll have the panel each talking about their perspective areas, and then we're going to have question and answer. There's going to be refreshments available, compliments of both Ron and Jane Provoca offered to participate in the refreshments, as well as our lovely city of Cloverdale's going to participate in that as well, and the Citrus Fair is going to make the auditorium available for our use. So I'll be meeting tomorrow to talk a little bit about the setup and how we're going to do that. But please, I know some of us are going to have prior commitments, I would have got the date out earlier, but I didn't have it because unfortunately, there, all these people had a, we had to come to a date that worked for everybody before we could actually lock one in, and so I did lock it in on the 6th, so I'm hopeful that everybody can get that on their calendar, plan to be there, and people in the community as well. Should be a good chance to get a complete overview from all the facets within the city, including the city, as well as all the things, so it's exciting. So I just wanted to get that out. So there'll be more coming on that, I'll be meeting with the Cloverdale Revival to get an article, as well as, I know, we'll get it up on our website once we finalize it, and we'll make sure we get the word out. So with that, if there's no questions, we'll move on down the agenda. Legislative report, anything from our city attorney or city manager? No. Okay, we'll move down, city manager report, anything to report?
Anything to report, Mayor.
Okay, city attorney, anything to report? Nope, okay. Council Direction on Future Item Agendas, any requests from any council member?
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking to be excused from our next meeting on April the 24th. There's a function honoring Frank Rose. As you know, Frank is an old timer in the community at age 94, and the Druids is honoring him with his membership to the Druids and, and other good things that he's done for the community. So I'm looking to be excused, I will be there for the closed session, I see we have one scheduled, but the event upstairs, or in the Druids Hall starts at 6:00 o'clock, so if I could be excused from that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody have any concerns on that? Seeing none, okay. Anybody else have anything? No? Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn to a regular meeting, City Council, it's going to be Tuesday, the 24th, closed session tentatively set for 5:00 P.M., and public session will be at 6:00 P.M. here in the chambers. Thank you, everybody, thank you staff for all your hard work, thank you for all being here.
5:30, can you say 5:30?